I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Friday, January 12th. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll just hand over your heart and begin.
Hallelujah. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We won't be having an invocation today, so if you could be seated. And City Manager, if we may have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Cassidy, here. Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And also present today, we have Lutfi Karuth from Best Bestin Krieger, and he has been assisting us in this process going to get the ballot measure on the next election, so we have him here as an expertise.
Great, thank you. Oral communications, this is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You'll be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken. General business.
Okay, the one item before you today is verification of sufficiency of signatures for the petition entitled, "Initiative Measure: Imposing a Special Tax on Passengers Arriving to or Departing from the City of Avalon by Cruise Ship, Ferry, or Aircraft to Fund Improvements or Replacement of the Catalina Island Medical Center and Associated Costs." In your staff report, we have laid out your different options. There's a total of three. You have the resolution and the actual initiative. So I'm gonna let... We also have Jason Paray, the CEO of the hospital. I have asked him to come today to give the presentation that he provided yesterday to the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting, and I thought it was valuable to have you see it.
Do we want to start with the presentation, then?
I think that'd be a good lead-in.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me come up. I was told earlier that I should have probably worn a tux because it's become the standard for some people to wear tuxes that work for the hospital.
(laughing).
When presenting. This is about the ballot measure that Shannon Olson pursued as part of the Chair of the Catalina Island Medical Center Foundation in the primary. All right, we gotta figure out which button I push. So many things.
Here comes Dad Lake.
After I promised you.
Denise, thank you for bragging to me about the greatness of the technology that you have yesterday.
(laughing).
Compared to mine. So Catalina is in need of a new hospital. As we all know, our hospital was built in 1960. In 1960, we had less than 2,500 residents that lived in the community. We also had about 250,000 visitors to the community. Actually, I think I might want to restate that. I think the number was around 1,500 residents that lived in the community and 250,000 visitors to the island in our 14,000-square-foot facility that we utilize still today. But yet, today, we have over 4,500 residents in the community and over and about a million visitors on an annual basis. And so we're being asked to, for a facility that was built in 1960, to treat that size of a population, we're being asked to treat a size of a population that's about four times the size. And please interrupt me anytime you have a question about what I'm talking about if it doesn't make sense. Why now? Well, we've known for quite a while that the state of California mandated all hospitals to meet certain seismic standards. At one time, it was supposed to be slated for 2015, but the state of California figured out that no hospital was going to be able to be prepared to be able to do that by then with the enormous cost that it costs to build a hospital. So they extended it to 2030. So that gives us 13 years to build a new hospital. It will take us a minimum of six years from the moment that we start designing before we can open the doors. It might even take seven. You know, we're on an island, we're in Catalina, everything's a little bit more difficult. So we have that to contend with. The other thing that we have to contend with that I'm concerned about, because I've only heard stories about what it was like the last time, is 2028. We have the Olympics coming back to Southern California. And I heard that the last time Catalina was inundated, and I'm very concerned about it being inundated again in 2028 even more because we've grown in size and our facility being able to handle the number of individuals that may be coming in for emergency services.
I think 2020's...
What will happen if the hospital closes? Well, firstly, residents will not have health care here on the island. I know my... Well, of course, I work at a hospital. I won't live here if there's no hospital. But even if I didn't, I know that families, and families with children and elderly, will make the decision whether they want to live on Catalina or not on Catalina if they don't have emergency services at a facility on the island. We have... We won't have any life-saving emergency services. One of the things that people sometimes ask me is, why not just have a standalone ER? Well, it's not financially viable. They've actually done studies in California with the California Hospital Association trying to understand, you know, what makes our hospitals the most financially fragile hospitals? You know, the ones that are most financially fragile, what is it that makes them that? And basically, the study showed it is the size. The smaller you are, the less services you provide, the more unfinancially viable you will be. So, you know, just having a standalone ER, the expenses for that will be enormous. I mean, just staffing it with emergency room physicians is a million dollars a year, let alone nursing, lab, all the other supports you have to have. And tourism. You know, when it comes out that our hospital's closing and it hits the newspapers and it's local news in the state of California, what tourists... I'm sure there will be quite a few that will decide, I'm not gonna go to Catalina because there isn't health care services. And the other one is cruise ships. You know, how is that going to impact the cruise ships? I've lived on three islands so far in my career, and every island, they state that if you don't have hospitals, you're not going to have cruise ships. The cruise ships will not come. Now, from my understanding, there is a contract that was signed years and years and years ago, and I'd love to get my hands on that contract, but we're still searching for it with the cruise ships and the city of Avalon. Projected cost, around $50 million, maybe even more. The reason being that it would be more is also is because of inflation within construction. Every year that we go on and within health care, in my experience, it's also been every year that you put something off, the cost of construction increases about 8%. But why is it so expensive? Oh, wrong slide. How are we gonna pay for it? One will be fundraising. We've already... The Catalina Island Medical Center Foundation has conducted a study as to how much they believe that they can raise, and they're gonna try and raise between $10 and $20 million. The other one is through the USDA. The USDA provides loans to rural community hospitals to be able to build new hospitals. That is where we go for our funds. We probably get an interest rate around 3.25%. Our payments, we've estimated to be around $2.5 million a year. And with this ballot initiative, we would collect around $2 million a year to offset that payment, and then we would come up with the other half a million to make that annual payment. And that's what the ballot measure is for. There we go. Why does it seem so high? Well, firstly, I think I was talking to somebody in here earlier. A house in Avalon to build is a million dollars. So we're talking about a hospital here with totally different codes and totally different standards that the state of California requires. We are... You know, we have much stronger codes that we have to apply to. One of the examples I think I gave in the presentation yesterday was is that when we were putting in the generator, we went to go and pour the concrete, and OshPOT stopped us from pouring the concrete because the stone that was going in the concrete did not meet the seismic standards that they needed, which is it has to be round so as that if an earthquake happens, it doesn't all break the concrete apart. So we had to stop that, and we had to go and get different concrete before we could pour. I don't think that happens in all the other jobs that occur around the island. Health care equipment. You know, our CT machine is over 10 years old. A new CT machine's gonna cost around a million dollars. Everything that deals with health care equipment is expensive. When you're talking about a digital mammography machine, we're looking at at least $250,000. It adds up rapidly as to the equipment that you need and what it costs.
Okay, then I have a question. Those kind of costs, are those included in that 50 mil, or is that gonna be additional, do you think?
That is our estimate that they are included.
So everything is...
Everything.
Walk-in, okay.
And system redundancies. You know, a hospital, and you know, we have the seismic standards we have to meet. The state of California is actually coming out with more standards that we have to meet. We have to... If the power goes out, we have to have electricity for three, four, five days before that we can generate to keep the facility going. We have... You know, one of the things that's gonna come out is is that we have to have a cistern at the hospital that holds four, five, 6,000 gallons of water so as that if we don't have water, we still have water for our residents and for the patients. We have to have redundancies within our internet, within our plumbing. Everything has to be redundant, so if one system fails, we have another system to back it up. Why ballot measure? We're not the only hospital that is dealing with this situation. You know, there actually... There are four other hospitals in recent months that, due to the seismic standards and having to figure out how to pay to build a new hospital, they have announced that they are closing their hospitals. Sutter Health Alta Bay, Community Medical Center in Long Beach, Kern Valley Hospital, Pacific Alliance Medical Center. All these hospitals are closing because they see the impending changes that they have to make and can't achieve them. What makes us different than other communities is that these rural communities, when they're gonna go out and build a new hospital, the only thing that they can do is go after property taxes. That's the only thing they can do, and so they put it on a ballot measure to increase everybody's property taxes. Well, that would put all of the burden on the residents in Avalon. We are different because we have the island, and we can create a transit tax, $1 to get on the island, $1 to get off the island, which we estimate that will cause the funds to become 90% from visitors and 10% from locals. Now, the numbers could be a little bit different than that, but that's our estimation as to what it will be. Who's supported the ballot measure? Well, to get it on the ballot, we actually have us, the foundation. We have a nice resolution from the city of Avalon, City Council, and we... I have spoken to Mr. Bombard, and Mr. Bombard is in support of us building a new hospital and this method of paying for it. And we are looking for more individuals that would be willing to put their little logo on this when we give presentations around the community. Benefits of a new medical... Uh-oh, wrong button. Medical center. You know, one of the things that I think that is wrong with our current facility is that our patients have to share rooms with other people. I think it's undignified, both in as a resident or as an inpatient or in the ER. I mean, our ER is so small that people have to be treated right next to somebody else. And I'll give an example of something I thought was just horrible that occurred. We had a local resident that was having a heart condition. Not the worst cardiac condition in the world, but there he is sitting on the table. So I go in and see him, and at the same time, an ambulance arrives, and that individual is having a massive cardiac condition. And so while this individual is being treated with the massive cardiac condition, being shocked and prodded and needles and eight people around the table with that individual, the person with the minor cardiac condition gets to watch all of this that's occurring. We need separate rooms so as that people can be treated with dignity, the person that died that day and the person that went through the trauma of wondering whether they were going to die seeing that occur. Also, when we talk about our long-term care residents, the people that have lived here all their life and do not want to go somewhere else, be shipped off the island when they can't take care of themselves, they want to live the rest of their days and die on the island, you know, they have to share the room with somebody else. That means, you know, when a doctor or nurse comes in to deal with them and treat with them, they... You know, the person next to them or their family members get to hear everything that's going on between the provider and that patient. I think there's a lack of dignity to that. And then finally, you know, the other thing with sharing rooms is infection control. You know, you've got people with low immune systems, and you're putting them with people that might be sick or less sick, and we have no other option but to do that. The standard is a patient to have their own private room, and that's what we will build for. We need an operating room. There's no reason why, when an individual has to go and get a colonoscopy, when somebody has to get cataracts removed, when somebody needs to get carpal tunnel or a knee scope, that they have to go over to town. We can plan and schedule those patients to all be done in a certain day and bring that type of surgeon in and provide that service. This is also one of those types of services that we can provide to make our organization more financially stable rather than being the fragile thing that we've seen for the past 20 years. Infusion therapy. And I've done this in other small rural hospitals, you know, when an individual has cancer, you know, they don't have to commute all the way to Torrance or City of Hope or UC Irvine to receive their treatments or HOG. You know, they can have their physician over there, and that physician can send the order to our hospital. And so when they need to get chemotherapy, we mix the product and the drugs, and we provide the infusion therapy. That way, they don't have to go back and forth, go get their chemo, and then when they're sick, come back on the boat. I can't imagine a more miserable experience, and we could provide that service and that care here. A fitness facility. We need to be more about wellness in our community, and as health care changes, health care is going to be reimbursed and hospitals are going to be reimbursed by keeping people healthy. That's what is going to reduce cost in health care, and we would... We want to play a role in that process. And digital mammography. You know, there's no reason why we have to do the annual fair of digital mammography here on the island. We can have our own digital mammography machine, have once every week or once every two weeks, have a person come in to perform those procedures in our... On our own home. You know, I know what happens here is a lot, is people don't see the advertisements, they don't see the announcements, and they don't schedule it, and at the last minute, they see the van here and they go, ah, get me on the list, rather than having to go to town and receive that procedure. And overall, if we can increase the number of services that are provided here in the community, fewer people are going to have to leave work, leave their jobs, have the additional expense of going back and forth on the boat. I mean, if we're talking for a resident, $20 to go across on the boat, you know, what we're asking for the hospital is $1 on every ticket, you know? By not going across to town for health care services, that $1 seems rather minimal. So how long would it take? Once we have the funds secured and once we have the land secured, which yes, is the great catch-22, you know, individuals we talked to with land want to make sure that we are financially viable in this project. And the people that are going to vote on this project want to know where the land is. And so it's my belief that once we have the financial package created, the land will show itself, and we will be able to discuss that more openly. It will take two years to just design it. And why it takes that long to design a building is, you know, it's not like we're building a private building for ourselves. This is the community's, and we are going to want the community's input on building that building. So that will mean community meetings with architects, with the design, with the things that you want to see in it. We're gonna make this the community's building, not just that, but also, you know, what style do we want? Do we want a modern-looking facility? Do we want a Spanish-looking facility? Do we want a log cabin-looking facility? We want the community's input on this.
And so assuming this passes in April, and not knowing your finances today, how much do you need to have in your pocket to be able to start doing all that architectural stuff?
Architectural stuff will cost approximately $2 to $3 million, is our estimate.
So will there be different designs done at that time when we...
Yeah, once we start designing the facility, that's when we will decide what is the outside facade gonna look like that we want, that meets... That fits the needs of our community.
Which could be... Actually, could be less, too, if we designed something smaller, correct?
It could.
Yeah.
Jason, one of the things we talked about yesterday after the presentation was given yesterday, at the $40 million, your approximate estimate of $1.9 million per year, it's gonna be about 20 years to receive enough money for the actual total amount.
No, 40... We'll put it into financing for a 40-year period, and so the debt payment is gonna be over a 40-year period.
How much is it gonna cost to build... How much is it gonna cost to build the hospital as you see it now, approximately?
It's gonna be between $50 and $60 million.
What's the percentage you have to raise?
Between 10 and 20 million.
Right.
From private donors.
That's only like six years, five years? But plus, you have other financing options.
Then we will go for the bulk of the money through the USDA.
I know, but you have multiple levels of financing, right? You have raising money through transit, and then you also have the hospital board that's raising money as well, or private donors?
The foundation is going... Has the role of raising funds from private donors.
How much you project that to be?
Between 10 and 20 million.
Really? So you could be ready to do this within a few years, then?
Well, we are working towards... A lot of changes have occurred within the foundation. They are actually currently recruiting a, what you call a CDO, a Chief Development Officer, to organize the fundraising campaign that we're going to initiate. So you have $10 to $20 million coming from that. Then we'll be going after the USDA for $40 million, $40, $50 million from that. And with that, then we'll have the payments. We'll be utilizing the funds from the ballot measure to make the payments on that $40, $50 million.
But there's no sunset on that...
There...
On the ballot measure, if it passes, there's no sunset on when that dollar per way would go away?
Correct. What you're looking at is debt payments of probably around $2.5 million for a period of 40 years. This is gonna take us six years. Last year, and one thing I want to throw in, you know, we're gonna utilize these funds to keep the building that we currently have open and running. We've spent probably a million dollars this year just trying to keep the doors open because the infrastructure is failing. And, you know, you might think, just as with court cases and attorney fees, well, this was a bad year, next year's gonna be different. It's never different. It just with our failing infrastructure, it's only gonna get worse and worse as time goes by. And I, you know, and I might throw out there, you know, we don't even have HVAC in the system. Our residents don't have heat. Our residents don't have air conditioning when it's hot. You know, it is a dilapidated building.
Is that property ours up there?
The land and the building is...
Is that property ours?
The land in the building is owned by the city. We pay rent, and we did it just last week, of $1 a year.
Okay. What's the soonest we could raise the money that we need to start the project, and what is too late? I mean, is there such thing as being too late?
Well, I think that you're too late if you don't have something completed by 2028.
But we need to start it.
The question is, is, you know, I believe in urgency, and if you don't have urgency, things will be put on the back burner, things will be forgotten, and then you will miss the date that things have to occur. And when a hospital closes, a hospital closes for good. Reopening a hospital is more difficult because... Than you could ever imagine because when we build a new hospital and we move to that, we just transfer all of our licenses and all of our accreditations and everything to that new building. When this thing closes, you lose doctors, you lose nurses, you lose people with expertise in health care, you lose all those licenses. Starting up a new hospital, pretty difficult, especially on an island.
So 2024, the building has to... You gotta have to be breaking ground by then, which means 2022, the fundraising has to be resolved by then, and we have to start the design of the building, correct?
I don't want to have the responsibility on me.
Yeah.
To complete a building within six years and have a cutoff date by 2030.
Right.
Too many things can happen and go wrong.
You already said it might take an extra year or two, so...
I want to get things done as soon as possible to ensure that this community has health care for years to come. And waiting is not an option. We've waited too long.
We don't... Well, of course, we don't want to wait till it's too late, but it's complicated.
What happens when one of our major pipes in the ER floods, and we have to close down the ER like we did the clinic? And, you know, there's no utilizing the ER. We're throwing a tent out in the back. I mean, this building is old and needs to be replaced. There's no option to it.
Okay.
We have... You know, we talk about housing and water as major crises in our community. This hospital is the slow train we've been watching for years and years and years, and eventually, we're gonna see it come off the tracks.
Well, it seems to me that we're gonna need all this... All those three elements moving forward at the same time, and I know that's an awfully big freight train, but there's gotta be places for people to live and water for people to drink, so those are the three biggest things we're looking at at this point. I mean, because right now, we're losing a lot of professional skilled experts in this community to not being able to find affordable, dignified, efficient house for them to live in. It's a situation as serious as it can be. Doctors aren't gonna live in a really crappy little apartment building that's run down.
I have the same problems.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. Well, our whole community does. So moving forward, those are the things that we want to see in this as well. We want to be able to look at this as a whole picture because we can't have the hospital be a draw on the community like, let's say, Vons might be without housing. I mean, it's gonna be hard to staff Vons without affordable, dignified housing, and it's already come and gone, I know that, but we can't let it happen again. So moving forward, we want to hear those elements be part of the conversation. I do.
They will be.
Yeah, absolutely.
Has there been any study done or any information worked with the chamber, anything as to what the impact of $2 would be on the visitor coming?
Well, we've looked at the stats of the visitors that, you know... Jim, the chamber sends out every month the stats of the visitors that are coming, and over the past few years, it's been around 950,000 visitors. So it's an easy multiplier of 950 times $2.
But has there been any discussion about the negative impact of more money to bring people over?
No, there hasn't at this time.
And I guess that's why the ballot measure. I mean...
Well, part of it, yeah.
Because we can say, we've heard from people that they think it's gonna impact them, you know, and that kind of thing, but I guess that's the... I don't wanna call it the challenge, but that's how the answer is given, pretty much, is by the ballot measure.
Is the ballot measure a surety that the hospital is gonna go ahead going forward and gonna be built? Is the money that's raised gonna go into a trust until... Is the money that's raised going to go into a trust until it's actually financed towards the hospital itself?
Well, the funds can only be utilized for specific things and the city is going to hold the funds and that's where the trust is. And it can only be used for those specific things. And we will access those funds when we provide the receipts or the contracts that state that we utilize those, these funds for this purpose.
God forbid we go forward with all this and then we end up not being able to do it. We've talked about retrofitting this hospital, right? Or just, is that just something that's totally out of the question?
That is something that is totally out of the question. If you had to bring in cranes, firstly, I mean, I've remodeled hospitals, I've built two other hospitals. When you remodel a hospital, your resident, your patients, your residents, they don't sleep, they don't rest, there's so much noise, there's so much commotion, things are going, you know, almost 24/7.
Yeah, it's impossible.
And that is such a small location. Imagine when we bring in cranes and try to build on and make it larger, where are the, where are the emergency medical vehicles going to go? There's no place to turn around. It is, anything, if you've ever been in an airport that's being remodeled, a hospital is 10 times worse.
Jason, if the voters voted down, does, do you have an option, be that you're, just in case?
I can't think of any other option and nor has anybody else given me an option. A sales tax, we're at the cap and nor would it create enough funds in order, generated to pay for a new hospital. Property tax, you know, I don't think anybody wants to put everything on our property taxes. It's not like we're a for-profit hospital. I mean, the only other option is to make this no longer be a community hospital and go to Torrance, Hoag, St. Mary's, Long Beach, and just hold the keys out and beg one of them to take it over.
And we, I think we've done that a couple of times before, right? At least twice?
And they don't want that.
Yeah, yeah.
They want something, if they're, if they're going to affiliate or partner with somebody, they want there to be a reason that makes sense. And they want affiliate with people that know what they're doing and have a financially stable and high-quality healthcare institution. They don't want to take over something that they're going to have to throw in 40, 50 million dollars to fix. And one other thing I might throw in, in my experience with building other hospitals as compared to renovating, it always costs more money to renovate than it does to build.
I think we have that experience too. So does the island company. So, okay, so the flank, just bonds, are those possibilities?
Well, we can do bonds.
I, I don't know anything about.
But we have to come up with the money to pay for the bonds. And we do not have 2.5 million dollars of free cash flow every year to make those payments. We just get by doing our operations and keeping that building afloat that we have currently.
Would the city move ahead, um, once, once this is voted on, would the city move ahead with our own impact studies or the planning department go, move forward with trying to understand exactly how this facility would fit into the community and how it would affect the community separately from the, from the hospital itself?
If it was so directed, yes. And I would like, uh, Lutfi to go over your options for today. And one of them is to hold off on, and, and conduct a study. And also, I'd like you to give the percentage of voters, because I know it used to be 23% would have to pass it, but now there's been some new, it's 50% of the voters would have to say yes?
Uh, no, you should just be on. Okay. So if, if, when this goes to the polls, this will be a special tax. So, and I'm sorry, Jason, were you finished with the?
No. I don't know if they have more questions for me.
But, but they may pop up based on what he says too, so that's.
The one thing that I did want to throw in also is the hospital is one of the largest employers in the community. The economic impact that we put on the community is substantial and I can't imagine what the community would look like with a whole bunch of hospital salaries vanishing and what that would mean to our local economy. I mean, we, we have about $10 million in net revenue. 65% of that goes into salaries. That would be gone. That's all I have. If you want me.
Have a seat.
So in terms of the requirements for approval, this is something called the special tax, which under the constitution, it will require two-thirds voter approval. So of the voters that turn out on April or whenever this election is held, two-thirds of them will have to vote in favor of the special tax in order for it to, to pass. Um, that's part of Proposition 218, which I know many of you have heard of in the context of property-related fees and things like that. But with respect to taxes and a special tax being a tax that can only be used for very specific purposes, uh, which are laid out in the, um, in the petition, then you need two-thirds voter approval. In terms of the options, so the purpose of today's meeting and the reason why we held this meeting on a Friday afternoon, which I'm sure is exactly what you were looking forward to today, is to provide the city with the most options. Essentially, as of January 1st, 2018, there was a change in the law that affected the, the options that the city has when it receives a petition. And basically, you can, you, you can either put it on the next regular municipal election at which council members are elected, or you can call it for a special, uh, special election if you would like to do so. Uh, the special election would have to occur between 88 and 103 days after you receive this verification today, uh, which kind of puts the city in a weird spot. There's actually a third option that the city has, which is the city can push this out for another 30 days to make that determination. Um, within those 30 days, the city could order a number of reports. Uh, the reports could be on impacts for land use, fiscal impacts, other things like that. Those are reports the city can still do outside of this, but it might have to be funded through the hospital or through some other mechanism. The problem with doing that, and it may or may not be a problem depending on, on what you choose to do, um, the reason why we held it today is because today is the absolute last day at which this can be placed at the next regular election, meaning in April. Unless the election is called for today, you're either looking at a special election that's going to be at the end of May, which would be like a week or two weeks prior to the next municipal election. Uh, and the cost of those will be funded, it'll, I think it was around $40,000 or something like that to hold a special election that would have to be budgeted for as a special appropriation. Or this can be kicked out to April 2020, which is the next municipal election, which kind of cuts down time significantly. So today would be the last day and that's because there's this 88-day requirement. Uh, prior to January 1st, you were also authorized to consolidate this with any other countywide election, which would have provided an option for this to be held in June. But unfortunately, with the change of the law, that's just no longer an option.
Or November.
Or November. It can only be either a special election at the end of May or, um, April 2020. So yeah, so again, your options are either to put this on the April election, to call a special, a special election 88 to 103 days from now, or to kick it out a maximum of 30 days during which the city can conduct certain reports and then call a special election, but, or, or put it on the next regular election.
So let me just ask about the, the report, not in terms of timing, but just in terms of report. First question is, who would do that?
So if you rely on this provision under the elections code, that would be done by city staff. And you can, I mean, you can hire consultants or something like that, as long as it can be done in less than 30 days. But it would be a city project.
So if we had to go out and do that, because I don't believe we have the, the bandwidth, as they say, to do that within a 30-day period of time, what kind of money do you think that would cost to have somebody do something like that?
Oh, I, uh,
I mean, give me.
I think, right, I think it depends on the type of report. I think it would probably be in the, you know, $5,000 to $10,000 for a number of the types of reports you would request. Um, I think for like a fiscal impact report, that might be really easy to do, and I know Jason has provided some statistics from the chamber that might be helpful to determine how much revenue, but I know, for example, um, you had asked about the negative impacts and that sort of study, I just, I'm not sure. I would think between $5,000 to $10,000.
So, so when I look at the things that we potentially could be looking at in that report, um, well, number one, the point is we need a hospital. So whatever the fiscal impact is, is almost moot to me because we got to have one.
Right.
And so that to, and fiscal impact on who and what, I'm not quite sure. Then on the other ones to me, on the, uh, you know, internal consistency of the general plan and specific plans, well, number one, we don't know where it's going. So I don't know how we would respond to that.
Right.
And number two, to me, some of these sounds like if I was building a, a shopping center, kind of different than a hospital. And, um, so the effects on the use of the land, the impact on the availability and location of housing, the ability of the city to meet its regional housing needs. I mean, yes, I guess, you know, the question is what kind of housing are they going to need and that, that will come up. But I'm just not so sure in the impact on infrastructure, transportation, schools, parks, and open space. Again, not knowing where it is and knowing that wherever it is going to be put, that just will happen. I mean, so, so I'm not, I'm not so, when I first read this, I was kind of concerned about and maybe more of a desire for the report, but when I look at it, unless you can convince me otherwise, I don't know that we need that report for a hospital, but.
I think something important to consider is regardless of what happens, let's say that the tax passes and proposals are brought forward for the construction of the hospital, the city still retains all of its land use approvals, uh, things like that. So when plans are brought forward to the city council or to the planning commission or otherwise, um, the city still has full discretion to review. Um, the city retains discretion, uh, to approve the terms of financing transactions if there's going to be bonds issued, uh, by, by the city on behalf of the hospital for the purpose of these projects, the city still retains control over those sorts of things.
Environment.
Environment, yes. And especially this is, you know, I think this is different than other measures that might have, you know, be in a position to be more kind of developed in what exactly the project is going to be. Here, I think, um, you know, and as Jason has pointed out, there's going to be community involvement and things like that. And there are going to be approvals that the city will have to provide in the future. So, uh, depending on the sorts of projects that are proposed, um, there will likely be opportunities to analyze it with more information provided.
Because we really don't have a lot of information to do all the, to do the entire report as it states here. So, and, and I guess my other concern is if that's, you know, if it, if it's approved, or if it's not approved, we got to go back to the drawing board and see. But assuming it's approved, that's just getting to that, because it's like delaying it by two years. If we said we wanted to do this report and blah, 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 delay it by two years, you're two years behind, which doesn't allow you to move forward very much if you don't have the revenue already coming in. Correct?
And it is a constitutional requirement. The city doesn't, does not have an option to not have an election.
Right.
The initiative power is granted by the constitution to the people. Uh, the only options that the city has, the city has discretion in terms of when that election will be held.
Two-thirds vote, how, how, exactly how many people, how many registered voters are there?
1,825.
Okay, 1,825, so two-thirds of that.
Well, it's two, two-thirds of those that, that come to vote.
Okay, 12, we had about 1,200 last time, two-thirds of that, what is that, about 800? Okay, we need about 800 votes. If, if you want it to pass, which.
It's just, it's just two votes.
If we only have 1,200 people come to the polls and it's two-thirds of that.
Of that.
So for the petition, the petition needed 10% of the total voters for the petition to be deemed sufficient. But in terms of the actual vote, it's only two-thirds of those who have gone to vote.
Actually vote.
Right.
Does the community have some questions?
Thank you. Pam Albers, 217, Cali del Sol. Um, I want to preface my remarks by saying that I appreciate and understand the need to replace the hospital and that, um, my comments are just to raise questions that I have and that the community, I've heard from the community, so that we don't go through an election and it doesn't pass. That's one of my primary concerns because a two-thirds vote is not that easy to get. So, uh, my questions have to do both with process and substance and I'm going to direct some of my remarks to you. So my understanding under the current state of the law, and I take it you were referencing SB 415 in terms of when the election must be held, is that, um, there's a recent California Supreme Court case that says that under Prop 218, um, when you have an initiative, it's not subject to the requirement that it be held on a municipal election. And I, I understand that that case involved a general tax as opposed to a special tax, but I think most municipal lawyers are agreeing that the reasoning applies to both. So my question to you is, since you're presenting this on a Friday when it's noon and none of the community knows about it, and so you've already automatically injected into the community a feeling of what the heck is going on that you're doing this and then springing in on us, isn't it true that there's a good argument that could be made that this could, this election could be held in June with the statewide primary?
So I think the case you're referring to is that the city of Upland versus.
Cannabis Upland.
Yeah. There, there is a very large sort of, kind of disparity in terms of how that opinion is interpreted. In terms of how I have advised my clients, I have not advised them to interpret it that way because the opinion was written in such a way that it's too vague to rely upon, um, in a way that might contradict what's required under the constitution or what's required under the elections code. There's language in the, in the opinion itself that really applies only to a specific type, a specific, you know, set of requirements. I don't recall exactly what they are, but I do, I agree that it had to do with the date on which a general election, or an election for a general tax could be held.
An initiative, it's specifically dealt with.
It's with initiative, right.
Which is what we have here.
Right. But I don't, um, I generally don't advise clients to rely on that opinion just because it is so vague. And the way that I've interpreted it in fairness, um, when I've dealt with that issue, it's really been with respect to the two-thirds voter approval requirement. And that's when I've advised, you know, many people not to rely on that opinion to get rid of that two-thirds voter approval requirement, but I think that the ambiguities in the opinion.
No, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you would get rid of the two-thirds voting requirement, but that the case can be read to support the idea that a voter initiative, whether it's for a general or a special tax measure, can be placed on, does not have to be placed on a regular general election date, which is what gets you into you either do it this April or you wait two years problem. If you could solve that problem, I think that you might have an opportunity to better prepare the community for what you're asking them to do and answer questions that have to do with the substance of the project, like why is it this big? Why are we doing it when we don't, where the land is? Have you figured out what you're going to do for rent if the rent from the largest landholder is going to be similar to the kinds of rents that are being proposed to the city, which are not affordable for land? So another procedural question then. So the ballot initiative, um, they gathered 10% of the vote, which requires that it be done on a, a regular election date, which would be April of this year or April of 2020 as you're reading it. But if they did 15%, which they could still do because they're still within the 180 days of circulating, they can do it on a special election date, which again, could be consolidated with the state in June when everybody's going to the, the polls anyway. I mean, I, I would agree that setting a special standalone election date for something like this is both expensive and is probably not going to, um, get a lot of people out to vote.
Right. So I'd like to address that point, but just really quick to go back to your prior point. The other difference with what the city is dealing with here and what happened in the City of Upland case, is that City of Upland dealt with interpreting requirements under a separate body of law, whereas in this case, this is under the elections code requirements for initiatives. Section 9215 refers to section 1405 of the elections code, which sets forth the specific date requirements, and those are applicable specifically to initiatives. So the, the constitution, which provides the power for initiatives, cites to these elections code provisions. So I don't think that the City of Upland case could be read in such a way that would otherwise undermine the statutory requirements applicable specifically to initiatives. With respect to your second question, the special election issue, that was something that we were thinking of as a, you know, that could be a backup plan for the city to have it on the same date as a June election. Unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, the date at which the county has provided sufficiency of the signatures is in such a date in which the math just doesn't work. So even if the city were to kick this out for 30 days by ordering reports, um, you still can only have the special election on a date that's between 88 and 103 days. And so that's why I said it would be late May, because that's just, in terms of the math, that's just the date that it falls upon, and that would be right before the June election.
Okay, but the, the, if they took the initiative back, went and got another 5% of the electorate things and tuned it, turned it in at such a time that it worked within the 88 to 100 days for the. days for the November election, that would be viable. I'm just questioning why it's being presented, if you don't do this today, you screwed the hospital, you screwed the community. Because I think it puts the city council in a difficult position when there, in fact, there are questions throughout the community that have not, that are serious questions about this. And that's why I'm pushing to explore, are there other options other than 2018 April and 2020 April?
Right. And that, that is an option, but that's within the discretion of the petitioner to whether or not they would like to withdraw their petition and turn over. If they did do it at a time in which the timing would work, then yes, of course, they could consult, you know, they could have it, have it beyond that same.
So, but what you're indicating is November of this year is a viable option if all of the procedural requirements were met in terms of the timing and if the hospital was willing to do that.
Right, but that's something that, that's not within the discretion of the city, that's only within the discretion of the petitioner.
All right, thank you.
Pam, I would like to address the first thing that you mentioned when you got up there for this late notice on a Friday. It is our deadline, and this is all based on the timeline going back to when the proponent delivered...
I'm not suggesting that anyone, I understand how it worked out that way, I'm just suggesting that that's not how necessarily the community will see it.
Yeah, no, so that's why I wanted to explain. When the proponent delivers their intent to me, it has to go to the city attorney to agree upon the title of it, then they have X amount of days, which could have gone over a lot more months, to get the required signatures. They bring them in, goes to LA County to get signature verification, and they told us, we don't know if we're going to have those back to you verified or not. And they did get it, then we had to post and send me two hour notice, and here we are.
Okay. No, and I appreciate that. I'm not suggesting anyone did that purposely at all.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure the public knew that...
I understand. In terms of the substance and what I think a report might be helpful with, I know that there are a number of questions about the scope of the project and the estimated cost that the, I've heard everywhere from 40 million to 80 million. And whether there's land that's going to be available at a reasonable cost, I think is another question that could be explored in a report. Of, I think, equal concern is the ability of the city to fund its own infrastructure projects. This is one of the few means by which the city can raise revenues, and I don't know that we have a good idea of, you know, what's the upper ceiling? At what point do the cruise ships dock? At what point do our visitors start to drop off because we've hit some number at which they say we're just not going to pay these additional, the ticket costs to get here? The, another, I think, very significant, and I'm basing this on, you know, the number of years that I did work for the hospital and just looking at what's happening, is the financial impact of the proposed and anticipated reductions in Medicare and Medicaid on the hospital. The current administration is not exactly a big proponent of spending money for healthcare. And with the tax bill that was recently passed, it's clear that there are going to be significant reductions in reimbursements. In fact, they're, they're already being pushed through CMS to reduce reimbursements to the hospital. And so I think it would be good to have a confidence that the hospital has built that into its plan as to what it's going to do. I remember a day when the city was funding out of general funds, a million to a million and a half, to keep the hospital doors open. And the city can't afford to do that again. So it would be, hoove all of us to make sure we have a plan that's going to work. And then finally, I'm just, because I had done a little research on USDA loans as they are right now, and my understanding is that the, I don't know if you're looking at the Community Facilities Program or the Business and Industry Guaranteed Loan Program, but the larger one, because the, the smaller one is, is one to three million in direct funds unless you're working with a lender. And the other is limited to a 30-year and it's only 60% if more than 10 million with a max repayback term of 30 years. So it might be that we, the city would want to see a little more explanation of how this funding works with a reference back to make sure that's in fact what the feds are providing and that the numbers work. And I actually think it would be interesting to look at bond financing through the transit tax. And just go to the bond market with that as the pay through. I don't know how much it would generate or how much it would cost, but it seems to me that that's some other option. Anyway, thank you.
So if I understood the first part of what you said, your little, your intro or segue or whatever, to try to make this successful, these questions needed to be answered. And again, I don't know if, if, if that's just food for Jason to say, these are the questions that are out there and to make your, the proposal more palatable or more acceptable is to kind of answer those if those are the questions. Because I know you said you have a plan, no doubt.
We are actually, as a collective body of a number of people, collecting the questions that people are giving us and putting them on a master document so that we can answer all of those, you know, when the time is right and, and we're giving presentations and that question comes up a second time, that that information can get out to people. So we will take these questions and add them to that master document so that we can be prepared to answer those questions. We can't, you know, it is such a complex industry and complex project, you can't just throw out the information off the top of your head with every single question that's asked. You actually have to do some research.
And I, you know, I hear, and we all probably do, it is the model that people go, but what is the model? We haven't seen the model. They are explaining it now, but you know, are we talking about things like, are we talking about 10 beds? Are we talking about 100 beds? Are we talking about, you know, operating room, one operating room? I think people want to kind of hear that kind of stuff as well.
And at this point, we are, we are right now scheduling different areas that we can do presentations, and when people ask those questions, we will be answering them.
Yeah, okay.
But as far as your question goes, it will be two ORs, because physicians like to have two ORs so that while they're doing one procedure, they can go to the other OR and do the second procedure while the first OR is being cleaned. That way they're not wasting any time.
Right. Okay.
And beds, we're probably looking between 15 and 20 beds. Because, you know, our population is getting older. Right now, our biggest problem is finding, you know, it's not necessarily just finding patients, it's being able to find a room. Because, you know, even though we're 12, licensed for 12 beds, you know, if, we can't put a male individual in a room with a female individual, so that really limits us when opportunities come in to admit patients. And sometimes we, we just have to say we can't admit you because even though we're not up to our 12-bed maximum, we can't put you in with this type of patient.
Right.
Did you mention anything about dialysis? Did I miss that somewhere?
I didn't mention anything about dialysis, but I do get that question often. And we can't do dialysis. We do not have a population that is large enough to support a dialysis center. I know that there are individuals that do dialysis at home, which is different than a dialysis center. Dialysis center also, one of the big things at the dialysis center is the amount of water that a dialysis center utilizes, which kind of really then would create an entirely another study that occurs. But you, generally in places where I've lived, where we've opened up dialysis centers, you need about 15,000 people to make it viable.
Not all needing dialysis, a percentage of those, 15,000.
No, you need 15,000 individuals, and then that will justify the need for dialysis.
15,000 people needing dialysis.
No, 15,000 people living in a community.
Yes.
You know, 10,000 people for, to employ a general surgeon, 15,000 for an orthopedic surgeon, you know, we, I can spew those numbers off the top of my head pretty easy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there is quite a few people though that do go travel daily.
That's, that's tough.
Yeah.
That's very tough.
Other questions from the community or from the hospital? Katrina, did you comment or you just came in?
I just came in.
Good, okay.
My main comment is, is you know, we do need a hospital, and we have to replace the one that we have. And this ballot measure is one way to really make it happen. It's imperative that we do so. That's all I can say.
Thank you. And I think Katrina was a member of the hospital replacement committee. So I just want to say that the general public, in general, speaking to you, we didn't just throw this meeting together at the last minute, and this isn't the first of the conversations we've had about the hospital. There's been multiple meetings from, with about anywhere from eight to 10 to 12 people from the community that have gotten together and have vetted their concerns and given input as to what they feel the hospital would need, what services might be good for the community, what services. And then we were able to brainstorm about some of the services as Jason just gave us his expertise on, on what's something that's actually viable, a service that's viable that the hospital could utilize that's not going to break the hospital. Otherwise, you can't have that dialysis machine because it would be too much of a negative impact on the bottom line of the hospital. So there definitely has to be some sensible direction as to what different services that this hospital would provide. And we did discuss a lot of these things. We discussed housing, we discussed landing pads, we discussed the swimming pool, we were all over the place with these meetings. And I have personally attended like about four of them. And going forward, I'm sure that we're going to continue to have these meetings to talk about this hospital replacement project. And it was on, and we did it because we needed to learn about what we were looking at, and we also did it because of the concerns of the community and the concerns of the city council, because Councilman Olson also sat on that board with me as well. So we've been talking about this for well over a year, years actually. I mean, I know you guys have been on council, this has been going on for, for maybe a decade, but we have been talking about this new hospital for at least two years now, since my involvement started with it. So I just want to let the community know that we didn't just throw this meeting together at the last minute just to try to get, try to get this on this particular voting session here that's coming up in April. We, it's, this, this committee that has been together in the hospital board has been trying to get the information together constantly since the inception of these ideas were coming through the hospital replacement committee, and then I know they've been speaking and pushing as hard as they could to get this moving forward. So the conversation is not new. And I agree that any, especially with Pam has, Ms. Albers has raised some excellent questions, and she's always very intuitive and insightful and thinking forward for the sensibility of the way that city council moves forward and the way the community needs to be represented and the questions that need to be asked. So definitely appreciate your input, Pam. Yes, no, thank you very much. And I'm sure Jason heard and Bryce heard your comments and, as well as ourselves. So moving forward, I'm confident that we're going as quickly as we can and we're putting as much information forward as we can. So I can just guarantee the community that. So that's, that's extended my comment right there.
Mayor Proton, Olson, do you have a comment?
Spending 10 years on the hospital board, we were kicking this ball around the court and we never came up with solutions to fund it. We always knew we needed to be done by 2030, but we couldn't figure out a way. I think this is a very creative way to pay for it. It's been vetted by the State Lands Commission, they signed off on it. I know that there's going to be a lot of ballots sell in the community, but I think it is sellable. And I think it's, I think we should be going forward.
And answer a question, because that was a question that somebody asked me in the community. Why does it go before the State Lands Commission? What's that all about?
Because of the tidings. Because the water, the money's coming out of the harbor, and money coming out of the harbor has to be spent in the harbor unless you can get an exemption from it, and they got a letter from the State Lands saying you can take money out of the harbor and spend it on the hospital. Long Beach in the 50s got fined half a billion dollars.
For not getting permission.
For not getting permission, spending money on libraries and city facilities and things.
And we would have had the petition circulated much earlier and the signatures turned in much earlier if we had not been waiting for the State Lands Commission to finally provide us with their ruling. We almost had the ruling once, and then the individual that was going to give us the ruling and changed jobs, and then we had to wait for a new person, and then we had to educate them. You know, it was the classic state of California process.
Yeah.
And so we got it, permission at the very last minute, and then we went like gangbusters collecting approximately 500 signatures. And very few people were adverse to signing the petition, and then we waited for LA County to put their sound of approval on it.
Yeah, it took, it took about a year, a little over a year for the State Lands Commission to provide approval.
Wow.
To give you an idea of how long.
It's like the coastal.
Yeah. Not quite as bad.
Councilmember Cassidy, did you have any comments?
I, you know, I really think that this requires the community's input and community forums, which is what I know the hospital is already establishing and scheduling. I appreciate very much the comment that Pam made regarding the revenues on Medicare and Medicaid, which is something that's just now, you know, being developed, and we don't know, she's right, we don't know where that's going to go. But I think being able to answer that question in the, the community and in these discussions about what is the backup plan to this if those revenues go down, I think is, is very valuable to have done that research and to have that plan. I'm also interested to know the impact of the travel to the island, what this, what the impact of the additional cost would be. To me even, I would say $2 is not that, it doesn't seem that significant, but in all of the visitor surveys and all of information that's received, the number one complaint that is heard is the cost of getting to the island. So I'm, I'm neutral on the point that I don't have enough information to determine whether or not that would be an impact for the traveler or not. I'm suggesting that I personally would like to have that information as well as I know other business owners would, would too. So I'd like to, I'd like to give the push that we go forward and get this on to the ballot for April with a caveat that there are questions that I think should be answered before we get to that, that point of deciding in April.
And that's up to the voter.
Right, but I'm saying that there are questions, let's, let's make a stronger effort in getting, and you may have, of getting all of those questions and being able to, in all of the individual forums that you're doing, being able to, to answer all those anticipated questions. But I don't see, I'm not convinced that it would benefit the community or the hospital to push this further. If we, if we, it's pushed out to November, if it's pushed out to April of 2020, that really doesn't give us enough time to complete a hospital. So I think even, you know, worst case scenario, you go through with the initiative and something happens down the road, you know, that can still be, a different decision can be made then, but I, I don't think pushing it down the road is a good idea.
Markell, 363 B Sumner. Just to state the obvious, of course, no one is objecting to the hospital. And in my brief discussions, no one is objecting to paying a couple of dollars. That's not even, you know, not even one beer a month that you have to give up. The concerns are very simply, where is it going to be? Yeah, this is a kind of a chicken egg thing. How much is it going to cost? Well, will we pay it, but we don't know where it's going to be? Is it going to be up by the memorial? Which wouldn't make any sense. Is it going to be where the current hospital is? You know, the, you know, hospital is a, is it what, a level two? You know, the, you know, hospital is a, is it what, a level two out of 10, which means that, you know, level ones means it's going to collapse if someone slams the door, and level two is, it's going to fall apart, you know, with a mild earthquake. Something has to be done. And again, stating the obvious, but, you know, one of the biggest questions, one of the most common questions is, is where is it going to be? Well, where is it going? But that, that's something, you know, this is kind of like, where is the swimming pool going to be? The one that was approved, you know, many years ago. So instead of rambling on, I just wanted to mention that my, my perception is that everyone wants it, everyone's willing to put some funding into it, but, you know, there's no, there's no point in putting this off, putting off this.
Initiative.
I've already forgotten what it was called.
Initiative.
Yeah, that too. Thank you.
That's a good point. I think, I don't think we can push that strongly enough, where is it going to be? And then Cindy, Cindy, one of your concerns was, well, how's it going to affect the traveler? And it's, and I don't know, I, I think about this really passionately, because it's, it's obvious, it's going to affect the median income family, the low-income families that come over, those people that we love to see, that take their kids down to the beach and they take them out for pizza, and the way things are, are getting so expensive over here on the street, it's like, but, but it initiates, initially, the thing that scares people is the cost of getting over here. And, because some people can't afford it, and it's obvious, you know, we get, we have, we, we attract that demographic of people that can, can afford it, but I get a lot of people saying, but it's so expensive. And those are the people that, those are the truck drivers and the school teachers and, and the grocery store clerks and the people that work in, some people that work in hospitals, and those people that have two or three kids, and it's like, that kills them, that boat ride, it's like $300 round trip, it's like, I didn't even get there yet and I already spent $300. Kind of like when you go into Disneyland, it's like, it's, I think that's definitely, you know, that's something that, I know the Express tries to keep their prices down the best they can, but they have an operating cost as, as well. So I think it's fairly affordable for us, you know, being that we can get our, our subsidy discounts, so we can travel pretty freely, but those poor families, that, that's who it's going to affect. And then Mark raises a great point, where's it going to be? We can't push that issue any, or maybe we can. Maybe we can, and maybe we should. Where is it going to be? And, and I think the voters are going to want to know if all this money's going to be, starting to be raised, it's like, that's why I asked that question before. It's like, what if we get to the point to where we're almost there, and then we realize that that land's not going to happen? And all that money's in the trust, and the city has it, how do we redistribute that money? Where's it going to go? What are we going to do with it? Maybe it is a viable option to maybe go to the military and get a ship to dock out here and have a temporary hospital until we do retrofit this one, if we have to go there. Is that even?
I have looked into temporary hospitals.
Yeah.
In the state of California, and I've actually met with about eight OSHPOD individuals in Los Angeles about that issue, and I wish I could find in my notes real quick their quotes that they gave me, but they weren't very favorable.
I'm sure of it.
Snowball's chance.
But the other thing is, is a temporary hospital has a very short lifespan, and it costs about the exact same amount as a brand-new, long-lived hospital.
And it has to be put on land that we don't have.
And it has, it has to meet all the exact same standards as any other, as a regular hospital that is built. The only short-term hospitals that can be built are, you know, your tents that you throw up, and they all, I think the state regulates them up to 180 days, and then they have to be gone. And that's for, you know, earthquake, a hurricane, that type of situation. As far as where it's going to be, you know, I, you know, I can't answer that question precisely. What I can say is the island company is very supportive of the hospital, and I can say that the island company knows that they need a hospital here on, in the community, and they know that we have a certain amount of time in which we have to have a new one built.
Takes them just as much as anybody else.
But they, at the same time, are very concerned about, you know, with land, whether, you know, we are financially viable. And this would make, you know, the passing of the ballot measure would be a very strong piece of evidence that this is financially viable.
Could I ask one more question? And that would be, could any of this tax be used for operations, or is it only for the building of the hospital?
Within the measure, it states what it can be used for. It's used, and please don't quote me, but debt financing, land acquisition.
I can tell you.
Infrastructure, capital project-type items.
Land procurement, and the only other thing difference is implement, implementation of new programs of the medical center. It's on page, whatever that pages. 10-260.
That's why I'm asking the question specifically. I'm using the term operating expenses, because that's what a general community member would understand. When you say capital, not everybody knows what that means, but that, that is a question. Like, if there's no sunset on the tax and the, the tax continues on forever and ever, can that additional funds, once a hospital's built, can that additional funds be used towards operating the hospital?
Well, so let's say we, we build the hospital, and we have payments for 40 years going on out, whether it be bond or USDA, which we could go down the bond route, and, you know, I've had LA County officials be willing to help us go down that, that route. We pay it off in 40 years, so basically, we're collecting these funds for almost 50 years. You know, 50 years, a dollar today, in 50 years is going to have the buying power of about 14 cents. It's not going to be worth a whole heck of a lot in the, in the timeline.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to move to receive, file, and accept a certificate of sufficiency of the initiative petition, A, and B, move to adopt the resolution calling to add this to the election in April.
Of 2018.
2018, yes, ma'am. April 10th, 2018.
Yes, and is, is there a second? I'll, I'll second it.
There you go.
Any other comments or community comments?
I don't believe so.
Call for the vote.
Over there, Joe.
Well, they turned the board around for me, but it's not lighting up, so how about a hand? All, all in favor? Fine, okay, all ayes.
Good night, Tony.
And there you go. Okay.
Jason, you have your questions out there. Go get some answers.
Will be adjourned?
I didn't, I didn't do that yet that day, anyway.
No, you guys are chit-chatting now, so.
We're going to say, good afternoon, Tony.
Good afternoon, Tony.